My name is Christopher Holt, I'm editor of campus this week. And I'm pleased to be here today. It'll be very simple, we'll start at 7, we're gonna go down, hopefully wrap up at 9. And we'll start with the, there's a random seat where you can hear, there's only one mic, and then there's a mic for the questions from the public up there. So after I finish writing the ramble, I'll hand the mic to the candidates, and they can pass it amongst themselves, if I have to say anything, they can try to tell it to you. We're gonna have opening statements, and we're asking you to keep it to about two minutes to begin, and we'll go right along there. And then we'll go right into questions from the public, at the microphone up here. You can ask a question of one candidate, or all candidates, but if you do ask a question of one candidate, the rest are free to answer as well. There's really no time limit on answers, but we ask that candidates be talking in the time constraints, and others who want to speak, and it'll be a microphone. There's, we'll leave for five minutes to close their comments. When the questions come up, and you ask a question of any of the candidates, whoever wants answers, pass the mic left. And then if it's one person, pull that, and we'll keep an eye on who wants to answer the questions. And when you're asking a question, please don't get along with speed for your language, you stay to the point, we'll appreciate that, I'm sure. So, a little further ado, I'll hand the microphone over. Keep it to about two minutes, and we'll work on this as soon as we can. Alright, thank you all for being here. Thanks for organizing this, yeah. Thanks everyone for being on stage, always been a support for trustees. Again, my name is Paul Lawrence, I've been in campus for about eighteen years now, I live out in Walhorne. I've got two children, in the public school system, go to Lloyd George Elementary. You know, a lot of class, one I'm running for school trustee. And the big thing for me was, you know, it's not to sound like a bully, it's really for my kids. What I wanted to do was make sure that they have the best opportunity possible, growing up. You know, you can be a basic school, it's competitive out there, and it's hard, and I want to give them the best chance possible. And in order to do that, we need to all bring our rounds together as well, and that's why I want to make sure that the school district goes well, efficiently, and, you know, allows the education area, and not just campus, but Sherwood, or some peaks, that we really have opportunities to do well. There are, I don't want to go over, and it'll be a long night. But obviously, a big point discussion is going to be called funding, funding for schools tonight. And of course, that's going to be something that we all need to, we all want to focus on, and I don't think only one person can do that, it's something that all's team, with a group of people, it's collaboration. Another one too is overcrowding of schools, and dealing with aging infrastructure, again, another hot topic in the newspaper, in the media, and just how do we deal with that? And, you know, through consultation and learning from the districts and other areas, is that how we deal with what we have, and find out how we can make it better? And lastly, last question, and I have a hot topic of like, climate crisis in schools. I got a lot of heat for that, because there are other benefits for like, climate crisis, personal crisis being classes, but I'm still a strong believer that, even though that's true, I think it needs to be managed a little bit better, and it needs to make a remarkable point for students, and, you know, look at some issues around that. Let me have about two minutes, yeah? John?
Well, again, thank you very much for organizing the affair. Thank you so much everyone for coming out tonight. I know it's difficult, coming here supporting candidates, I think that's fantastic. We're all up here for a job interview, we're all seeming to be part of the team of trustees that are going to represent this district in court. What people don't, I think, understand is this is a combination that has to see in stewardship. Stewardship being, we will spend about three quarters of a billion dollars of the public's money over the next four years, so that is a very large responsibility. We have an area of our stewardship that's larger than any country's, and we have the responsibility to rural and urban students, every child actors, as we like to say, and that includes people from beyond campus or within this district. We have to make sure that we advocate for opportunities for them, make sure that we now understand in our modern world that high school graduation is not so much an endpoint as it is a signpost. We need to understand that there has to be a transition to your next level of training, whatever that may be. We have the luxury, the good fortune to have a wonderful university, it's happened over there, but it's a wonderful resource for this community, where students can pursue so many opportunities in trades, and technology, and academic pursuits, high school to the business school, and then the law school, and I'd like to see more of rich for that next step. We have to look at high school graduation, and understand that a modern economy is going to demand a different movement. And one of the things I would like to focus on, and understand we have a wide range of duties here, but one of the things I'd really like to focus on is that transition to the next step. I think we can do a better job, by starting with the beginning of our business school, both dual credit courses, courses that we could send and instruct it to teach in high school, that would be credible for high school and university. Those are the sorts of conversations I think we need to have, to really have our young people understand that this is a step, there's more to learn, there's more to acquire, and we owe it to our future leaders in this community, our future leaders in this country, to ensure that our students are the best prepared they can possibly be.
Good evening, everyone, and is that, that good, to your post? Let me share a round of applause for that. My name is Tom Keters, I've got seven years of experience as one of your city councillors. A few things that I'd like to mention right off the hop, so, one of my inspirations for running for school trustee is my grandfather, he was a school trustee from 1955, until he died in 1982, for twenty-eight years. And a story that I really fond of, and speaking of technology, in the late seventies, when basically computers were nothing more than, or like calculators, there was a discussion about purchasing, purchasing basically the first computer for the school board, and the school board voted, can't sit, because maybe they thought it was passing bad, they couldn't catch on, but my grandfather, Henry Groome, he bought the first computer for SD73, or it wasn't SD73 at the time, he bought the first computer for the school board with his own money. I think that's the kind of vision that we are lacking at the school board these days. We need to have people that are really progressive, and help the education system to be providing the resources that it needs. Having been on the school board this past year, when the Vancouver School District basically stood up and said, "We're passing a balanced budget, because education is under 20% of our costs," I would be the first one in camp school board to stand up and say, "We need to stand with the Vancouver School Board." We have a new provincial government that's much more equitable to funding education as it should be, but we need to make sure, because the bar is so low, that they're not only raising that bar a little bit, it needs to go up a lot. So I want to be an advocate for the school system, and I think I have the passion and the track record of accomplishing big things for our community.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Nathan Wade, I'm an incumbent, I'm actually the current chair of the school board. So again, she needs to ask what makes the chair, an attorney with ten years, decide to do this again. Well, one of the reasons is, is I'm not done being an experienced, passionate advocate for childcare and education. Why am I asking for another term? Because right now, in this school district, we are closer than we have ever been before, because of the team that has been in place, and letting our campaign, let the public really be aware of our situation for capital, and to really, really press the provincial government for the funding that we need into this system for our infrastructure. And we are further along than we have ever been. I believe that in another term, we can really push through our capital plan, and the ideas that are on there, so I chose to run again. I also chose to run again, because we went through a very, very long, inclusive process to create our new five-year plan, of which we have six incredible pillars that we are working towards, and I do have copies of them, the pillars, I can talk to you about them later, and it'll take up my two minutes. But we did a very inclusive job that took over a year, talking to all the stakeholders in this community, and we're two years in, and I'd like the opportunity to follow it through since we started it, because there are some amazing things going on. The other reason that I want to run again, and right now is an exciting, exciting time for our teachers in the classrooms, and they need the resources to make our new curriculum happen. They need the resources to take criticism, to be innovative, and I want to help and continue to support that. I'm also a graduate in this school this year, and I believe in our children.
Thank you. My name is Sam Jensen, I'd like to start by recognizing that we are today on the unceded territory, this is great people, I believe that's important, as coming off the festivities on this weekend, I hope everybody enjoyed it as much as I. Moving on, I'm running because I've been a part of this committee, community for thirty-three years, I've worn away here, and three generations of Jensen's have lived here, and I really believe in advocating for the community, creating strong conversations, and creating new solutions. So what that means is that we work with administrations, packs, parents, students, and we're friends with governments, so we provide funding for our kids, is that important? And they should be important to everyone. I don't have kids myself, but that's another reason I stand here today, because I do believe that these are issues that should be important to every taxpayer, almost as much as capitals. The kids may be more important than the capitals, and I think everybody should get informed of this excellent governance that we're under, and make the right decisions on the podium. I would also like to recognize that, to me, it's more than just two meetings, a lot of our public speaking and graduations with kids, it's making those connections with that community, those students in the classrooms, those teachers, and we're handling it within the school system, so that we can come up with those creative ideas to move forward. We have an opportunity with like, the bargain coming up next year, to walk into it with a new, new ability to create change, because there's provincial funding that's possibly going to be allocated, we need to fight for that in our district, and I want to work with those provincial representatives, like Ross Fleming and Darrell James, so that we can work together, and move together on those issues, and with that, pass the weight to you.
Well, thank you very much for coming, I wasn't really expecting such a large group, and thanks to that, thank you for organizing this. I'm running for reelection, in the upcoming civic election, I'm presently competing, like, completing my first four-year term as this trustee, so I could issue that for team. I break into the board table, a wealth of educational experience, as my entire career has been in education. Eighteen years as an intermediate teacher, which stretched over two provinces and three school districts, and seventeen years as an elementary school principal, parent cabinets, at five different schools, last year four, because I was a vice principal of Parkness, so, Parkness for one year, and four schools for the age of sixteen, and now four years as a school trustee. You've been told, over the course of the last couple minutes, that continuing our push for provincial government funding, to give our weight proportion of capital, is the advocate each year, so that we can address the overcrowding of several of our schools as far as that. You've also been told that implementation of this five-year plan is a major focus, and I agree with both of these. I believe they are very important, and as a trustee, I will continue to work towards ensuring success in both. Saying that, I also have, in the media, the issue that I'd like to address, and that is the image of the school board in the eyes of the public, and the employee groups. Decisions that we make are vast, that are contrary to what views the voters have told us, that they would like to see happen. When important decisions are made, and we see input from the public and our employee groups, the board needs to raise a decision on that input, and I don't believe this to be done. If elected, I will continue, as I did in my first term, to represent your voice, when it comes to decisions that affect education where you're at. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Pierre Foster, I was born and raised in Switzerland, I'm a certified chef, a pastry chef, I came to Canada in 1989, and I've lived in Canada since 2002. My daughter went to T. Thompson Elementary School, and that's a high school, she got a journalism degree from TIAU, and she lives in Berlin by now, working as a copy, very proud of her. I'm also the treasurer of the downtown neighborhood association, and the chair of Centennial United Startup Corporation. Our public school system is one of the most important pillars of our society, and we must take care of it, we must clear it out, stop it. There is many challenges, but we have, there's also solutions to those challenges. But in order to tackle those challenges, and implement those solutions, I believe it needs a new breath of air in board education. I'll have a few points I want to make. One of my, most important thing is to protect the public and the public school system, so, like, contractors, advertising, travel companies, out there, it's a public space, it should stay public. Another point on that, the money, the appropriate funding, the school district is supposed to do a job, I think it's the duty of the provincial government to provide the resources that we can do our work. I'd like to, right now, I'll meet with teachers, and students, support staff, and the parents, and see what's actually happening in the school, because I think what happens in the schools should guide what happens in the board of education, not the other way around. And finally, my goal is, I like to have a great school for all kids, no matter if that's a poor or wealthy neighborhood, every kid deserves an awesome school. Public education system should create well-rounded, confident, sorry, in the math-thinking citizens, and no future workers, that's right, and that goal will guide me on whatever position I will make in school work. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to take this time to acknowledge that we're on a traditional and unceded territory of two separate people. I'm grateful for the abundance that the land, and the rich culture and spiritual heritage provide. Advocate, work, develop. If you need ladies and gentlemen, I need to carry a shield, and I'm running for school trustee. I've always been devoted to my community, and the health and education of children. I am a proud parent, graduated, and current student in our public school system. I have ten years of experience with interior health authority, and have a spouse of eighteen years as a dedicated educator for school district seventy-three. My hands-on experience in public education and healthcare has led to my insight, understanding, and ability to empathize and recognize, challenge the welfare of rural, and our poorest schools within the school district. Together, we need to advocate for immediate capital funding. Many schools will overburden the temporary organs that have been used for long-term solutions. We need to build and reopen schools, and have a broad enrollment, and replace aging infrastructure. There needs to be delicate balance between reopening existing school facilities, and repairing school structures, and building some new facilities, due to lower maintenance costs. Our district needs to continue to lobby vigorously for more capital funding with our current governments. Next, we need to work collaboratively, to ensure system-wide convergence of classroom condition, workload, professional development, and wellness provisions as a means of attracting and retaining teachers. Last, we need to develop a plan of action, to ensure schools receive sufficient numbers of speech pathologists, school psychologists, learning assistant teachers, special education teachers, school librarians, and literacy programs, aboriginal education workers, and resources that honor and respect the aboriginal First Nations, meaning in Inuit. Advocate, work, develop. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Heather Gray, I have been a resident of the council for forty years, I wish to say I've lived my whole life, but I don't know, they're old enough. I have been a member of the school system here, I was an uncertified teacher on hall back in the day, in the early nineties, and that was the part of my experience with university education, that made me believe that I did have a lot of room to teaching, because it took such a special person to actually be in that hall, excel in that hall. I think that, I don't talk about the list of things that I think I can say need to be fixed, I think a lot of those, you've already talked about, capital funding is always going to be an issue, we have issues with overcrow, we have issues with different needs in the school systems that really are not being met right now. And my goal in all of this, in terms of running, is to be a person who represents the community, but to support our teachers, our support staff, QB, everyone involved, in making our children's experience what it should be in schools. And our children really are the ones who are the most important part of the school process. Don't want to be talking about the magnitude of the budget, and things like that, I mean, it's huge, when you look at the responsibility of our trust to do, and that's where I see that our trust is being so important. The job that we are having, or that we're asking you to give us, is not one of trust. If we break that trust, then I think that we probably need to look elsewhere. But I can stand up here and say that it is my goal to move into this with a lens of an individual who's worked for twenty-two years in the community with mental health and substance use. I have coached numerous youth teams, volleyball, basketball, soccer, I've spent a lot of time with kids, and I've spent a lot of time with teachers and administrators in the course of my life. I believe very much in the fire arts, and I want to see those things continue, so I give it, I give it my best, this is going to be helpful to that table, not my training at the mill, not my desire to start over, to find a new six-point strategic plan, but moving on, with the conference already, yes, I got a close. Thank you.
I'm Edley Harper, I've been a school trustee for ten years. I have three kids in this district, and so I'm very invested in the success that our schools have, because my kids will be in this district for quite a long time more, my youngest is only three, three. I want to make sure that all children have the opportunity to succeed in schools. I'm the trustee liaison for most of the North Shore and Brock schools, and I see firsthand when I walk into our schools, the effect of the decisions that we make as a board. Arthur Happ is one of my schools. Last year, the Rumbery clubs were very generous in starting off the Starfish backpack program, and there were only twenty backpacks, and I can remember the principal telling me how desperately the parents were to make sure that those kids got their backpacks when one of them had been ill, and wasn't at school, and having to pick it up, and how much it meant to the family. This year, there's a hundred and twenty backpacks, and most of them are going to my schools, and I know the impact that that has, I know what the impact of not having technology in the school means. I know firsthand, when I walk into those schools, what it means when there isn't somebody there to support some of our Syrian refugee families, when we have to have teachers rely on Google Translate, that means that we have to have technology in our schools, and it's up to us as a board to make sure that we have those in place. And that means meeting students where they are, realizing that some students are going to need more help than other students, and having the flexibility in the district to do that. It means that we have to be innovative, and we have to be clever, and we have to be empathic about where our students are at. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Carolyn Thompson, I wanted to thank the campus law organization, and also to acknowledge a traditional territory in this separate people. I'm once again coming to the stage, I live in Sun Peaks, I do many rounds around the city, I'm consulting working, under contract with the Roland Land Hospital Physicians Association. Through my professional work, and in the passion and the vision that I have for the position of trustee, I draw parallels from my professional career to my vision for trustee. And those parallels really, looking at, you know, the way in which school districts, excuse me, are separated, just as the health authorities separated, into different classes, and so my purpose in saying all this is to say, you know, we all draw parallels from various aspects of our lives. My mission for trustee is to continue to enhance all the schools across school district seventy-three, but working in partnership with the team here. I started tonight on a bit of a left foot, there is a council for encouraging Chase for Chase is one of my main areas as well, under representation, but you know, there are choices to be made, and realizing that there are conflicts that will occur in any scheduling event, and being a public figure, those are just the realities. But my reason for being here is to hear what my future team may have to say, just as you folks are here, to hear what we also have to say about being trustee. And so my goal is to make all communities in my area, and in all the school districts seventy-three, great places to live and learn. My experience of our schools and peaks is that it's the glue that really holds the foundation of the community together. There are so many factors and pieces joining our community, and that means growth, growth from a community perspective, growth from all sorts of perspectives. And one last thing that I'd like to say about my mission, is to strengthen First Nations education within the public school system. I believe we can live on a beautiful land, and that land also has much to teach our children. Thank you.
I was remiss in explaining to those who don't know, that the detained candidates to my left are seeking five seats within the city. Carolyn Thompson is one of two candidates for Chase Sun Peaks and Sun Rivers, and Julie is here, just so you know. Now, I'm just opening up the floor to your questions. If you can line up in the middle, if you have questions for the candidates, I'll put it on the microphone for you. And we can go up about eight, eight forty, eight forty-five, and then, and then it's closing the day, it's, sorry. The floor has been responded to last time. Oh, responses, I didn't want to put a timer on it, because I guess we're supposed to try to get them throughout the pass, so I was just trying to be respectful of people, trying to be sincere, don't go on and on and on, and look around, and then get to the point, and hand out the mic to somebody else. I'll put this in the middle of the question, and I said, we'll go, I'll start here, I'll move this way.
I'd like to thank you all for running for elected office, and for serving the baskets, it's a real honor to see you all up here, and I encourage you to keep going, wherever it leads. One of my passions is public engagement, and a few years ago, we closed a school right here in this neighborhood, and there was a hearing over at the head group center, if any of you were there. And after the, after the hearing was over, I went and talked to some of the trustees, and I went out to my board, that the decision was made long before that meeting, in fact, it had been a fine decision to have been made, three to four weeks prior to the session. And so, I was a bit, yeah, the question, okay, the question is, given that you've got a new strategic plan, I'm hoping that it has some new public engagement clauses in there. Trustees don't often engage with the public, it's one of those middle-known agencies, so can you tell us about your goals for public engagement, and how you would improve over what happened in the Stewartville school?
Thanks, Chris, for the question. Yeah, I think this has been a huge problem, there's a few examples of this with the school board in the past. And, you know, a part of it is the dynamic of, and it's quite a large region, so we have various directors of nuclear and nuclear security to some of the northern municipal urban issues, so it's, it's great to see Carolyn here taking interest in connecting with us. But one, one learning example is the two-week versus the one-week spring break. The, the school board, to the credit of the Mr. Survey, the survey results, both from staff and from parents, was overwhelming support of a two-week spring break, and the school board went against that. And I think that's a major problem, and it's not so much the issue itself, it's the underlying premise that the school board hasn't been listening, and even while it solicits input, it doesn't follow through on listening to that input, so, to me, that was a critical error, and it's not in alignment at all with the trend of college. So to me, that was a critical error, and it's not in alignment at all with the trend across the province. So that issue starts Stewartwood specifically. That's one of the main reasons that I've drawn involved with this election, is that there's a disconnect between the school board and City Hall. So there's, are we having an official community plan? It calls for dense inclusion of the downtown. How many families are going to move downtown where there's no neighborhood school? I would never consider it. So there's this disconnect, and I'm sure it goes both ways. Where the city has projected growth areas, such as Borden Quah, when there's still, there's already massive pressures on the elementary secondary. So I want to be a ongoing conduit. We have, on paper, we want to meet twice per year. I think the school board and City Hall have three times for the last four-year term. And so the disconnect is way too vast, and I want to try to bridge that gap.
Well, thank you very much for the question, Chris. You pointing to engagement, and I think that's vital. People need to understand, whether you have kids in the system or not, my children have graduated from the public school system or the post-secondary beyond that. And when I look at education, it doesn't matter if you get to the system today or not, or you've never had children. Your future depends on a strong public education system. The nurse will be a charity, the person who's going to, you know, attend to your children, the person who's going to provide medical care to you and your family. It all hinges on a strong and robust public education system. When I was on Board Chair in previous life, about 100 years ago, I published a column every week back when we had newspapers. Remember newspapers? And the county council, which is kind enough to publish a school trustee column on the basis of, for three years every week, more or less, I published a column. When I was on the city council for a number of years, published a weekly column. I think we need to engage the public, educate them, have them understand that schools are important, not just your people with children in the system. They're important for absolutely anyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris, for the question of public engagement. I can speak for myself in public engagement. I was those chairs who were putting together a new strategic plan. We had over 70 meetings with different stakeholders for input into the new strategic plan. Yes, there are two pillars within the new strategic plan that speak to us, paying more attention to our sustainable resources. One of those being partnerships, of course, and for us to create better partnerships so that we can all lead, learn, and work together. For me, being from a place of public engagement, I would be in a school or an administrative office for some public function that is related, or at times not even related to the school district, just to be out there to talk about it. There's usually typically two on my calendar. Just recently, we had a new opening at the Eric Hour, and our children's choir, our children's honor choir was there singing the original song. I made myself available on Saturday, Saturday evening to do that. When it did come to the camp, kind of the city has done, we worked on the list to meet with them. At that time, Chair to be heard for myself as Vice Chair approached the city and said, if you need to talk to us when it comes to your camp choir. We did have discussions, a radical densification. We highlighted the fact that, don't worry, the plan was there, I think about daycare. Because they don't come to us until kindergarten. And so when you do start building that pipeline, you need to start considering the neighborhoods, not only the schools, but also you need to be considering the daycares. In the past two years, we have had three meetings with the city. We have continued and grown our meetings with the Board of Governors back through. We know as a board, and I know specifically as the Board Chair, that that's a huge job that we need to do. To reach out, and more importantly, we need to reach out and do it more publicly. Because yes, John and I remember the days where we used to give tight columns to.
One of the fun aspects of being a trustee is getting out and going to the schools and going to the activities that happen at the school. Just last week or a week, two weeks ago, I had the privilege of watching the principal at Westmount Elementary get a pie in the face at the start of the Terry Fox Room. When I first got elected in 2014, I sat down with the staff at Westmount, and we talked about one of the things that they really wanted, which was a set of stairs leading down to the soccer field. This summer, it got built, four years out, but we got it done. I enjoy getting up there and meeting with the teachers, and enjoying watching the activities that the students are putting on. That's such an important part of our job. And I hope that answers his question.
I lived down in Westside in 2006, and it was Westside Elementary School. There was a public consultation as well at that school, I was there actually. And the public said, keep the school open for many, probably for a few years. And it was the same situation there as with Stewartwood, the decision was already made. So this, really, in my opinion, it's not much harder having a public consultation if you make the decisions before that. An interest in exercising public consultation, and that is not acceptable. The Stewartwood thing here, I believe, the city, school board, nobody had any interest ever in keeping that school open. And whenever somebody came up with an idea, how to keep it open, what to put into it, it was always, you get sixteen days. Possibly become, nobody ever came out and said, yeah, that's good, let's find a way to do it. And thus, the attitude of that is changed. It doesn't really matter for the public if that's, if the city is involved, or the school district is involved, or whose jurisdiction it is. What we need is a, a relationship, it has to be done, that's, that's the point, that's what we have to achieve.
So one of the things that we do at the board for public engagement is we realize that our planning communities don't necessarily have the ability to come into the city for us. And so we actually go out and have meetings out in our planning communities. So next Monday, we'll be in South Park. And last month, we were in Berrier. And when we're up there, we sat down, and we had dinner with the parents that wanted to be there. And we talked to the students that were there. And we make an effort to go out, spend a couple of hours out in that school, in that community, without it being a formal meeting, because frankly, a formal meeting can be quite intimidating when you have to stand up in front of a group of people and speak to them. And so we go out there and we hire guests to make it as approachable as possible for people just to talk to us. And so that's one of the things that we do as a board, is we do go up to our other communities, and we spend time there. And we do it in such a way that people, the public, will come to us.
I want to say a quick follow-up question. And I think that maybe another question that we can spend time on, I don't know, please take a really deep round of the idea about having no neighborhood schools downtown, and that is an issue when you're holding that school choice and not one that is available as a neighborhood school. In terms of communication, I think that, and again, I'm obviously in a newish setting, but I'm getting a sense that there are some, there's some differing opinions around how accessible information is being and how transparent people have been, not just to start at the trustee level, but if people have done their decision before school closes, and that it's more of a, or do emotions when that decision is already made, things like that. I think that we really need to have people on the board as trustees who are incredibly good communicators, who are comfortable with having difficult conversations, who are willing to talk about difficult information, but also the ones who are going to be encouraging the relationships that are going on within our school system. And so, yes, we need to have good relationships with the community. Yes, we need to have a good relationship with different people and resources within our community. But we also need to have good relationships between our administrative staff and teachers and the support staff that go into the schools. I think that open eyes of communication are the way that we actually get things done. I think that if we can be transparent, be open, and be accessible, then that would serve us very well. I can say that being in the school, I've had a chance to be in a lot of those sports with my daughter who's in grade six. Every school is very different, and you can see the needs sometimes right when you walk in the door. David Thompson is one of the most problematicly horrible issues that's happening within school districts 733. But I just think in terms of communication, open, honest, clear, transparent, what you see with me is what you get. I would hope that for people who wants to decide as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the question, public engagement. Really, a big passion of mine, through my work every day, it's all about collaborating. And so the way that I view the question, Chris, I can't see why, thank you, is to go back to some of the goals that I have as trustee. A trustee of an area that's quite vast, not vast in terms of locations, but vast in area. And again, this is where the town is lying, trying to leave many places at once with two small children. But really building my deal to build on a cultural heritage of the area. And so we're doing so, you know, we do that by talking about speaking to the people, speaking to the community people, understanding, you know, the history. That is really what is going to form my vision, my, my decision-making, you know, in collective, in sitting at the board table. And so there's a couple of things that work very well that enable anything to succeed when it comes to a decision-making process or policy at that. And that's a strong process and communication. And so public engagement and communication is key. And so in keeping those two, two elements front and center, whether in my professional life, my public life, or perhaps as a public figure, communication will be a strong feature of the way that I work myself. I will have to be in many places at once, and I'll just have the strategy of, of help us to deal with that in collaboration with the team. Thank you.
I think one of the things that everybody's been talking about was the disconnect. So for myself, I went to the DPAC meeting. When I went there, there was nobody else there except for myself, the DPAC, and three of the executives from the school board. While I was there, they told me, and everybody that was there, that it was a disconnect between them, the principals, our council, our mayor, and they asked about how we can fix that. I think that the biggest thing is, we need to show up. We need to have parents come out and get involved in schools. The DPAC mentioned that they were having troubles getting parents to come out to the pack meeting. We need parents to come out and get involved. Right now, I can see a bunch of our candidates, my for council, mayor, coming out and supporting trustees. We need that as well. We need to bridge the gap. We need to work together.
So thank you again, Chris, for your question. And to tackle special schools like Stewartwood in the future, I'd like to really take a close look at the capitalization enrollment. So we can have informed proposals to deal with those types of things with permission from government. We need to talk with apps, we need to talk with the administration, we need to talk with teachers, so that they're all informed and all educated on those proposals, so that we can go to grassroots movements so that more voices come forward with those ideas and get involved within the communities to make those changes. Have some respect to them.
Sorry, so I'll link this quick, I guess. Back to the little question, is that how do we engage people to be more helpful in school and in public consultation? And I think for me, the bigger thing stands out in education, how do we get people interested in what we're doing? And like John said, his other candidate said, is that it's not just about whether you have a student in a school. It's all one, all one community, right? And it's, it's so important that you get people engaged, so they know exactly what goes on. If you start, for example, a number of like three quarters of a billion dollars, that gets people retention. And it's more than just the finances, but just really what the impact has on the economy or the community and everything that goes on with the school district. And, you know, one thing that I almost had to give you as a trustee, I liked it, was the night that we meet the parents. Instead of trying to get, or meet the teacher night, sorry, instead of trying to get the teachers and parents to come to you, go to them. And every time we have to meet the parent or meet the teacher night, we go there and allow parents and students to actually be the trustee responsible for that school. Now, I know it's hard for them on schedule, and it's not hard when it sounds maybe, but I'm really going to, going to the source and trying to ask people on what we do.
That was a lot of, a lot of, a lot of answers. I think one of the, is that decision here, probably, but I'm going to follow my management's one minute, just so. I know I can pass this into this time, but unless you have other questions, we have that, that's quick. I'll just say one minute, and then I'll just wrap it up then, but I'll be into further data. Also, John and others, you can read a column from Councilors and School Trustees every month. Academy's this week, Academy's week, just to be super god, next question.
So I've heard a lot of talk about public engagement and from trustees, a lot of image. But talking to parents and listening to parents are not the same thing. So the big issue for my school and for lots of parents that I know is the two-week spring break. So teachers and students and parents overwhelmingly, as Counselor Gaver said, overwhelmingly voted for the two-week spring break. However, the board voted against it and returned the one-week spring break. So this question for you to comment, can you tell us how you voted and why you voted that way?
The motion that went before the board recognized that a slight majority of parents and a large majority of teachers who live for two-week spring break. The motion of the board literally did agree with the two-week spring break. The difference was, the board chose to follow the path of best practices in labor relations and asked that it be negotiated within the contract and not attached as a memorandum of understanding. One of the reasons that the board did that is we are the only contract in the province locally where that contract dictates when the spring break starts. And we have to start our spring break on the third Monday in March, irregardless of what Easter is or anything else. So when we come to putting in a two-week spring break, it would be much easier if it was part of a contract. And it would also be easier if we're appropriately, we could move the start date slightly so that it could match up with spring break, because then you would be trying to put in the minutes, and there wouldn't be as many. So I really need to clarify that the board did not say no to a two-week spring break. The board said, we're going to follow best practices in labor relations. We're going to ask that it be negotiated in a contract. We have a new agreement that should be coming out in 2019. So that could be a point of negotiation under the new agreement. But the board did respond by saying, yes, slight majority of parents did want the spring break. Majority of teachers wanted it, and we wanted it handled as the best practice of labor relations, we wanted it negotiated. We also need the public to understand that when we do that, we also need to go back and we also need to talk to and include our QP workers, we need to include our principals and vice principals associations, we need to include our exam staff, because it has impact on everybody. And everybody needs to talk about what it means for them and their role in the school district for that to happen.
Thank you for the question. I'm voting for a two-week spring break. A former educator, I know the value of a two-week spring break. I know that long stretch from February to March is very grating on teachers, on students, on QP workers. When we did the survey, contrary to what was just said, ninety, over 95% of the QP workers surveyed said they also wanted a two-week spring break. Over 95% of the teachers said they wanted a two-week spring break, and over 60% of the parents that were given, in the surveys, said they wanted a spring break. We received letters from people saying, oh my God, what a great idea. I'm in a split family relationship, one of us can have one of our kids each week, like have our kids one week and then the other parent can have it the second week. We received letters, from a letter from the employees at the hospital that are on shift work, who also told us the same thing. Did we agree on a one-week spring break as a board? Move that this Board of Education approve a three-year calendar with an annual one-week spring break as posted and circulated on the district website for all districts, but with exception of Sunapeaks. The very final comment on the motion, should language that permits greater flexibility in the calendar such that a two-week spring break is achievable with no loss of instructional days from the approved calendar, that hindered any possible hope of negotiating a two-week spring break with our unions. Because if they're opening up a calendar book, a calendar book has. I voted for a two-week spring break.
The motion that I supported basically said that we were in favor of a two-week spring break as long as we
as long as we can negotiate it into the contract. The thing is, if you do a memorandum of understanding, you have to renew it every year, and then you have to go and negotiate with QP every year. And our QP staff, especially our hourly employees, like our educational assistants and our bus trackers, they're only employed for ten months. So losing a week's worth of salary really isn't fair when they're the most paid people in our district. So we wanted to make it fair for them. We have a lot of parents, a lot of people who complain about the number of days the kids are out of school. And so we wanted some flexibility, so the school's spring break could be scheduled Easter. And that's what we were asking for. There's a lot of schools that do pro-lee days in other districts in the summer, right before school started. And there's no reason why we couldn't do it here as well, but the contract that we have hopefully prevents that. We wanted a little bit more flexibility around the timing of spring break, so that we wouldn't lose days of kids in school. I'm gonna go back to those kids who are at the academy, because those parents can't afford childcare. And if they have a choice between working and not working, if they're gonna work, because they have to put food on the table. And that means those kids are at home alone. And that's not acceptable.
Years of their life. And it's also one of the best. So I would like, anyone who wants to answer this, what is one thing you would like to see to improve the experience for kids in kindergarten here in Coles?
This is a tough one. I actually found it, I started kindergarten about a month ago. And, you know, I'm not trying to compete with fires here, but the whole experience from the get-go, the letter, and she, she got her first letter in spring and said, "Dad, this is the letter I gave to the kindergarten boys." That, that started the whole excitement process, all the way to getting another follow-up letter pointing to your teacher. She started the school year part-time for the first week, and slowly eased herself into it. And to see her grow into it, I think just the last month has been great. So I really can't, I really can't fault anything. I think it's been a fantastic process. And it's been, just to see her grow, it's been fantastic. It's probably not cancer, but I think it's actually been fantastic, so.
Maybe himself, honestly. Mine was twenty-five, twenty-one. Of course, everyone's hand, holding the hand, and this new venture that the boss of the bar on, my wife and I, our experience was very positive as well with the school system. But of course, you know, some kids may face some challenges. We should be looking at, my sister was in our preschool teachers, she thought getting her partner about doing the home business in the first week where the teacher, I suspect, did a one-on-one time, rather than after kids all show up at once, get them prepared, get them to know the teacher a little bit. There's lots of things we can explore. I agree, the system's not exactly broken at this point. And certainly, speaking out of COVID from our perspective, it was a wonderful onboarding experience for our children. Starting educational journeys is our continuing today.
Thanks, John. Thanks for the question, Nancy. Yeah, I must hope you mentioned on your intro, I ran out of time, that I definitely believe that education is the best investment that society can make. We often, it's often not against things like healthcare, which is an perpetual emergency. So we see this slow drift, where we have re-approvisional resources going, having things like education to things like healthcare, and of course, healthcare affects the people that go home. So we need to advocate very strongly to bring that focus back on education, because if we don't invest in education, or education won't happen tomorrow, but they're gonna be massive to society as a whole. So kindergarten, looking at education, I think kindergarten is a critical component of education. That, those are the years when a student decides whether they love or don't love to learn. I think shadowing, as I prepare to enter the teaching program at TRU at Campus Schoolyards, I have open invitation from a kindergarten teacher, and I think I'll, I mean, there was, because I think it's such a critical part of a child's kind of learning. I'm not on it? I'm not on it, okay, so we're wrapping up. And basically, I think it's a critical time, and I appreciate the question, and I think the classroom size, especially for those age groups, is critical, because as they're learning both schools, learning about whether they love learning, which is, I think, a critical thing for kindergarten, those are three groups, can be either.
There are two things that I know we can do better with the onboarding with kindergarten. I think we have a really, really good system. We pushed really hard for this past year to get pre-registration out there earlier, because that makes it easier on the kids, it makes it easier on the schools, and it makes it easier on the teachers who have that early enrollment, down some of the middle numbers, so that we can be sending out our early letters to all of the families. That doesn't always happen, so it is a push we're going to continue to do, that we just started in this past year. I'm really doing more advertising around that a little bit. The other thing that I know that we're doing, because we have a ready website, we're trying really, really hard to more effectively communicate. We are getting a parent app. So I think the sooner that we have parents or kindergarten kids that can start to be receiving the information, it makes it easier for kindergarten kids. And I want the public to realize this, unless you just reason why through this process. Some kids, some schools do a graduated entry, and it's longer in some schools. But others, they do it based on the knowledge that they have, and it's their coming in. And I really agree with that process.
So I'd like to start with saying that I totally agree that kindergarten teachers are very important, and they need lasting memories of their students. Actually, today I was fortunate enough to meet the former kindergarten teacher of mine, and remind her that she taught me the B's number four D's because my mouth is sexy. That sticks with me today. And I think that's important, I think that's testament to all the good work that teachers do within our school system. So I won't just kind of go back. Like, I went to encourage our students to bring the play, so they can make, they can learn from experience, so we can go to some to learn through the different running heights and styles. And to quote another kindergarten teacher, my get, Cassie, to make mistakes, that was a spiritual thing.
Thank you. Well, I had the opportunity for seventeen years to be able to be a school administrator and watch the enthusiasm and a look of wonder in the eyes of the kindergartners too, so they have everything in the school. I think one of the best things that we did was make kindergarten a whole day rather than not pay. Kindergarten students are also great in the fact that, for the climate of the school, because newer kids, what did the kindergarten students, when they walked into an assembly, they go, wow, look at them. Like, they're just wonderful, this new assembly gathered together. We, as far as getting the kindergarten kids ready for school, they're, I think they're already ready, they're just waiting to get into those doors. I know my granddaughter couldn't wait for school to start in September. But we have a Strong Start program, and we also have the daycares, which are working really hard at getting the kids prepared for group, get assemblies and group activities.
What?
Well, it's perfect. There we go.
I think one of the biggest things is, I talk to parents, and some of the kindergarten kids get to vote for two hours. Some kindergarten kids get to vote for ten hours. We equalize payments between all schools, so that all kindergarten kids can vote ten times rather than two times. And our paths, they're so overburdened. We need more playgrounds to play on. We shouldn't have to work with VCLC to try to get playgrounds, new playgrounds.
Hi, I'm just gonna say this quickly. I think recognizing that for a lot of five-year-olds, like in schools, their first experience with diversity, of culture, of orientation background, all of those kind of things. As someone who came into the school system with a physical, I think, disability, but something that maybe stand out in the crowd, I looked to my teachers to normalize that for me. I know it's a few that are done near their home, I went to the school. I was initially seated with three other people, because I had a hook as a little girl at ten. I was seated with two girls who have broken legs and a girl with a hearing. And the four of us were sort of staring at each other all the blocks. And to take a look at how that evolved to the different type of setting when I was grade one, two, and three, where it was very much an inclusive and supportive environment. And this is a provincial, she was here tonight, and she was my grade three teacher. I would have had that charm from her, it was fantastic. But I think they're really giving kindergartners the best possible entry into this world of diversity and into this world of newness, because a lot of them have not had experience outside of their home. So that's what I'm really encouraged. And props to kindergarten teachers, I don't know how you do it without a whole lot of help.
One of the things that I would really love to see is a Strong Start kindergarten school. And that's where families are basically welcome to bring their little ones into a classroom-like setting, sort of, inside a school, so that they get familiar with that element, and they learn to work with groups, and they learn to share, and they have those experiences. And one of our challenges that's been on the School Trustees Association radar, and that's something that all of the rest of these wonderful people are gonna get to learn very quickly, the BCSTA, PC School Trustees Association. That's something that's on our radar, that we're talking to the provincial government about, is making sure that the provincial government lets school districts allocate space in schools for the little tiny guys that haven't hit school yet, or the preschools, the daycares, the Strong Starts. And have that space as part of what's expected to be in a school, not just classrooms.
Thank you for the question about the kindergarten children. And I just wanted to speak from my own experience. My daughter's first day of kindergarten, I was a mess, she was not. And so what this question made me think of is the greatest thing that I did for that day was to step back and give her the responsibility. Give her the feeling of responsibility. She had gone to Strong Start programs with me, she had been engaged in different activities, and here I was trying to hang on, but when she was just fully ready, fully ready to walk through those doors. And just to touch on a few of the items that were spoken by Megan and Adam, just about the daycares, as well as the Strong Start programs. Part of my vision for trustees is to strengthen that connection between the daycares and the community schools. However, we're in an area where we are in a small community, spaces limited. Those are the constraints that we're driven by. And I speak to many small communities within the area, area before that I represent. And so just to bring it back to what I was speaking to about answering the question, again, responsibility, creating a space for our children to feel responsible about and open up to enter into school.
And I want to start with Joe in the middle.
Yes, I'll start with the left, yeah. Yes, yes, because we need to keep clear. Or do you? I, I do that, I don't. Okay, or not, but do you want, do you want?
I'll just start with Joe.
Do you want three, three answers to that? Do you want?
One to ten, one being not at all, ten being all four, and all four answers.
Just, just.
Elementary, elementary, middle, high school.
Well, I can see.
No, 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 one to ten. Elementary.
You don't want any other?
One to ten, elementary.
Elementary, I would say five.
Eight. Middle.
Seven.
High school?
Ten.
Okay.
Elementary, five. Middle school, seven. Uh, it's ten for high school.
Elementary, it's four, eight, six. Middle school, eight, five to eight.
I would go seven, eight, ten. Elementary, I would say three. Middle school, I would say eight, and high school, it's a ten.
Elementary, it's eight. Middle school, I'd say nine, and high school, it's a ten.
Four, six, ten.
Elementary, I would say four. Middle school, I would probably say about seven, seven and a half. And high school, I would say nine. But I also needed to say that it also is the problem of the teacher, within their classroom, taking their time.
I'm gonna go backwards, that's all right. I would say high school, nine. Middle, middle school, six. And then I'm gonna split, and I'm gonna say grades four to six, four, and grades one to three, zero.
At the beginning, I'd say two to three, high, middle school, five to six, high school, nine to ten.
Elementary, zero to one. Middle school, five, and high school, nine.
How many of you think technology in your jobs? What does technology in your jobs technology?
Retired? Okay, that's the next question, thank you very much. Next question.
Hi, my name is Suzanne, I'm a local teacher. I've taught in this district for twenty-two years, and now I'm a teacher for ten years. So it must have been a great profession for me. I've been happy doing it. The other day, somebody asked me, what, what is your legacy, what would you like to be remembered for? And they all said, music, because I did a lot of music. I've always done a lot of arts, I taught a lot, um, music, drum, some support. But I think that my family would be teaching the corps. And there aren't very many.
Can you continue the question?
Well, I would like some in what your ideas are, or what, where you're coming from, from the fine arts. But I think it's really even more important to teach children to work together as a group. And this person said, Suzanne, you should go to the parliament and teach those people how to listen to one another and do a lot more group work. And so it's sort of a double-minded question. First of all, what are your trainings on fine arts and how that's going in the schools? I'm a little bit out of it now, it's blown to the retired teachers now. And the other question is, working in groups and finding more opportunity for people to follow on that.
There's a lot of questions.
Yes, sorry.
Want to see, is there a, a higher spot?
Okay, a little bit on the right.
Let's start at the same place, yeah. Okay, so higher.
Thank you very much, we'll be somewhere better. Coming from a community, again, where there's space constraints, there's constraints in the field, resources, the things that we can focus on are always easy to focus on, but the things we don't have. What about the things that we have? We have kindergarten teachers who have strength, who have, who has the ability to have the creative minds, while we hold in ourselves, and that is exactly what our school is doing. We may not have the space, but we get creative. We go outside, straight, this one, you know, the teacher brings the instruments, and they don't have to be big. I think we ordered drumsticks recently, drums, drumsticks, and the children are going to get creative, and that was for the way.
And fine arts is an integral thing in how we do this. The creativity that it brings, I think, is one of the cornerstones of what kids are going to be to succeed in the future. I was really, really, in my first term as trustee, very upset that we were losing music on the North Shore. It was very, very difficult to get music to create settings on the North Shore. And I was overjoyed when the middle school, all of a sudden, every single word set I wanted to had access to a music teacher, and I was just over the moon. And it shows with the music program that they have a rock. And, you know, I'm a Ms. Michelle, I'm probably aware of you. But I was just overjoyed with that, and I think fine arts is an integral part of what's in these schools.
I am definitely in support of as many fine arts around me as we can maintain in the school system. I think that for children who have different ways of learning and different ways of trying not to express themselves, different ways to succeed in areas of life, and if we limit those, or those are lost because of COVID and things like that, we lose some very important ways of experiencing learning, oral expressions of. Musical literacy and artistic literacy are... and artistic literacy at times. And in many situations, as important as, I would have to say, so I think that's important. And I extend my love.
Thank you. My husband is in the audience, he's been a music teacher for eighteen years at Rock Middle School. So I am definitely a supporter of music and arts. I have a diploma in fine arts, I have a diploma in graphic design. Our students and our kids have gone through Kism, have taken to a school of music. I've been to many performances that not only rock, but also, but I've been to the school district honor band and honor choir. These are really integral music programs that need to have in our schools. I used to go to like second year school, I had an awesome teacher, Dwight Love. They no longer have a music program, I'm very disappointed with that. Barrier as well, lost their music program, they do not have a music teacher. So I think it really needs to advocate about the music in all of our schools. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm greatly in favor of arts programs, and way more arts programs. Over the decades, we've concentrated way too much on just academics, and we lost all the creative parts as well. Also, in arts programs, you have a lot of students that want to make, which often is not possible between the academic programs. The one thing, of course, there is an arts program. My daughter went to some music program on the west side, and she actually had to rent a saxophone. And there's the big problem, right, that not everybody can afford that. So if we're going to have arts programs, they have to be fully funded. The equipment has to be there, the instruments have to be there. It has to be around every child, no matter what home, what income their family has. Otherwise, we're just building like an elite program.
What do we all have on our purchase? Posted on our old boards in our kitchens, or in a bedroom. It's art, it's art coming from the kids. They're constantly drawing, they're sculpturing, they sing. All of these things are extremely important. It allows the exploration of the model, it allows creativity. And it takes, it's an area in school that takes the pressure off of knowledge seeking, because they're able to express themselves in our, and. On a final note, I myself am a musician. Why would I not want to have music in the schools? I play the black piano.
Thanks, Susan, for the question. Thank you for your years of service in the school system. I believe that art teaches more than just art itself. It's many transferable skills, like you mentioned, it teaches group work, it teaches stress relief. And in this busy world of tomorrow, with so much technology at our hands, we need those abilities to have something that wouldn't walk away from our technology too. That gives us that stress relief. And which kids are tomorrow, they're going to need even more, especially the later on. I think it's important, too, with creativity in the future, it's going to be more and more of a demanding skill with the rise of AI. I think those creative thinkers are going to provide the solutions in science, and then mathematics, robotics, like computer. We love that creativity, there will never be the last answers.
Thank you so much for the question, Susan. My whole time in housing education, whether I was on board or not, I am a true, true supporter of the arts, and all avenues of it. I just, it opens up our kids' minds, it teaches them to take risks, it teaches them about as possible. Today, my daughter started her first real professional career as a mechanical engineer. I graduated from Queens. She always participated in the arts. In fact, she spent three years at the Camden School of the Arts for grade seventy-nine. And even when she left to pursue more of the sciences at NorCal, she volunteered in the drama program, because it meant so much to her. And to her, music is the purity of science. And that is what I too believe. And at the time, in this district, when we had to find a enrollment, we did everything we could to keep the arts in the schools. And right now, we need to do even more, but our problem is the music teachers. We don't have that, and we try hard to attract them to the district. But I don't have a district, so I'm struggling more to get music teachers than we are. But the arts are always on our radar.
Thanks, Susan, for the question. You just started. Yeah, I think the arts are critical. I actually have a good fortune of shouting at Jen and Alpa at the Camden School of the Arts. I've done a hundred hours with her. She's an unbelievable music teacher, she's so honest. But it's seeing the students, and whether they're going to dance, or it's unbelievable the amount of, you know, you can see the stress just like going off their shoulders when they have the ability to express themselves, and they have to go with it. So like Adam was saying about just equipping people for the future. Because, you know, there's a lot of things to be discussed about in our world right now. But it's amazing to have those creative skills and have that, you know. And it comes to like emotional literacy and all that stuff. It's got me so excited to become a teacher, seeing what's possible and what's happening in schools. But at the same time, it all comes down to our ability to do it. Teachers are going out of pocket for resources. And we have to rebuild our relationship with provincial governments. And we need to make sure that we have the resources to equip those teachers to do what they are so good. But also, it can't be just special high schools, it has to be available to everyone.
I'm going to read this ten page for a grant about my wonderful talent of light, my wonderful talent of children. My son has a master's degree in music performance, he's an orchestral musician, we lunch out right now, so you're preaching to the choir. But, you know, when I watch any kid, my little kids, of course, and an age child, I watch a kid playing something like one sounds of orchestral trombones. And they're watching the conductor, they're staying in time, they're keeping a rhythm, they're moving their hand, they're clawing, they've got their armchair going, and keeping in tune with them, with themselves, with the group around. That's a lot of things, it's like jogging on the unicycle, there's a lot of things happening at the time. That's an incredible skill. I remember watching my children make adjudicated, and the adjudicator said something that always stuck to me. He said, you know, you're too young to know how hard this is, and I knew. And I meant that, I was just, you know, this is an incredible thing we're developing for kids when we're given that opportunity to engage in some sort of arts expression. And it's not just about being a great musician, it's about being a great human being, they learn the poise, they can speak in front of a group. I'm never more proud of my kids when I see them speak in front of a group of people. I just wow, that they've got a poise, and a sense to themselves that is just something you cannot replace in any other aspect of education. So thank you so much for your service and your question.
Thank you. For fine arts, you know, I also work for the National Center for both, this is a key program, and also, you know, continue on other lessons. So can I hear you at the time? But now, I think that was probably the greatest gift I ever had. Even to this day, I'm sure it would have been more if I was younger. But fine arts are a huge part of what we do, both culturally and in school. I think they do as much as we can with that. And my kids are in island dance, and to see them get up and dance for people, give them confidence, and be creative, and make mistakes, and learn from it, I think it's huge. And that's really what fine arts provides to kids.
Thanks, thanks for answering, one ten or under, that's fantastic. Next question.
Hi, my name's Jesse. I have a similar sort of question about outdoor nature education. So would you work closely with the city of Camden, and the parks plan to make sure there was an outdoor nature facility near all the schools? For example, doing an interpretive nature park in the Frederick Island, like the Dufferland and Denver, and kind of like that sort of thing.
Thanks for the question, Jesse. Yeah, I think that there's a lot of natural partnerships between the city and the school district. And I think that would be a great opportunity, the nature parks especially, center located, that is easy access for all schools, because transportation can be a barrier for field trips and that sort of thing. So I think it's, the park would be a great location. Keep it brief.
Sure. We're open to hearing from the parents, to hearing from the city, and different partnerships that can be created around that. Right now, with the new curriculum, it's all about experiential learning for students, and that comes in the current environment. So group lots come together, work with administration, and work with forward. I see lots of opportunities that we can have to support that, building with the forward partners, especially in the community.
Thank you for the question. I'd love to look at nature parks being more available, but I'd also want to make sure that we have common for kids like the River Salmon Run, which I was able to attend in two weeks in a row. And it brought me back to when I was a kid, walking along those shores, those memories stick with you for life. And I think it really does give you empathy for the environment, it supports that more. And when we start with the kids today, we won't have these discussions until we have all the news of more of them.
First off, I'd like to mention that Jesse informed me that I was his grade four teacher at Mark Preston. So I must be getting older. School District Seventy-three bleeds away when it comes to outdoor education. We have Isabel Lake, we have McQueen Lake. And for us to work with the city, and I'm also on Parker Prep with Jesse, and for us to work with the city and create more outdoor venues is an awesome idea. Because kids learn so much from when they're on field trips. And you just have to take a look at the buzz on the bus from the drive up to Isabel Lake or Elton McQueen Lake, and trekking around, and dipping the nets in, and scooping up the little cat holes or ponds, these type of things. And I know that the Parker Island is really looking at a nature park, which will be fantastic, as well as the Dufferland, and there's also, we have the Dean Island, Island Park up there as well. So again, it's SD Seventy-three, we are very focused on outdoor education.
I'm very much in favor of having more nature parks, we have a lot of parks, full of sports fields and all that stuff. It's actually nice just to, for everybody, actually to set a space where you just can hang out. It's important for a school as well, I was in the kind of, actually on my McQueen Lake, when she was in elementary school there, I spent a week out there. And that was an awesome time, that was a really great time, great time for the kids. They get to walk, you know, in a night walk in the snow and that kind of thing. The only problem on a Sunday is once again, the fun, and there was actually, if you touched it, I'm pretty sure it's mentioned, we took basically our focus kind of thing. So these programs have to be absolutely of no cost to any kind of parents, and a lot of all the small matter.
Thank you. For our family, our kids also got to do the McQueen Lake, go and see the salmon. Those were a huge part of what our kids got to do. We walk around Mack Island all the time, kids, our kids have played sports. I would like to see both, I would like to see where we come together and have both, both the nature park and sports come together. I love to walk around, and I see the deer there, I'd love to keep the deer coming back. I think we just need to put them both together and work together, rather than just a nature park or a sports facility, why not have our own?
I want to ask very quick, having the opportunity to spend time with the children, and to also see my daughters spend time with McQueen Lake, Isabel Lake, I think that the evidence of a world of nature and part of the learning experience is written all over them, when they have the opportunity to hear, and when they can hold those things that they talk about. My daughter's got to nature, she sometimes walks encouragingly, but she will do it at her school as part of the learning experience where you run all the way without questioning. And I think that that's something that's vital to the health level being of our students as well, getting out of classroom into being a world of nature.
I think kids having access to nature is hugely important, especially as we become more and more urbanized, and we lose touch with nature. And we get used to being disturbed by concrete and blacktop. And we don't know how to go and just listen to the insects and the birds, and to actually feel, observe, and feel what's happening around us, and we get desensitized. And so I think it's critically important for our kids to have access to natural areas.
And so in terms of the beauty of collaborating and being engaged with our fellow communities, and the community members, we realize the beauty of the land around us. We only need to drive about an hour, not even at Camden, in each direction, any direction, to see how vast and beautiful this land truly is. And so I live full time, and there is a wonderful place there. We might not have a very pumped up, formal playground of sorts, but there is a beautiful area that I want to come enjoy, just as there is machines, just as there are in between in Pritchard Pinata. If anyone's taking a drive into any of those areas, all it takes is just to make the commitment to get outside.
I'll be very, yeah, anything to a nation, I think any kids outside, away from, you know, like I said, zero to one, especially elementary school kids, anything away from, or from some type of technology. On a personal note, my kids, maybe what happened every week, and that's if they listen. I guess not very outside, reading, that stuff. Anything okay that I'd usually be around, and it's all for a good benefit.
Where it keeps a tear in you, you know, students from around the world, it's all going to come here from cities with twenty, thirty million inhabitants. And they're blown away, once I think that's when we'll be quiet there. They're blown away quite when we have to walk here. Of course, we need to harness that for our kids, and sometimes if they don't realize what we have in that garden, some fresh eyes from across the world, when they come here, they don't remember what we have. Of course, we're going to have to incorporate that in our teaching and providing kids, and it's an awesome gift that they're doing. All right, we have a couple of messages, closing comments, or any other questions?
Yes, getting into schools is really, really important. So to the encampments, I'd like to know how many times in the past year you were able to get into the schools that are assigned to you? And you had conversations with staff and students, and to the others? I know many of you are working full time. So how do you plan to get into your schools and have meaningful conversations with staff and students?
Okay, just start again, and make it simple, how do you plan to, and probably introduce the message?
Many years of hard work and dedication, I spent years in university, finding what I thought would be the ideal career. The low level, I wasn't sure what that was until the last few years, when I finally felt like I did. And so, I say this because I went to public school, I took the years of university, that gave me the opportunity now to be flexible. And so, I have two small children, I live in a remote community, I do drive a lot, but I don't want it. And so, part of my strategy, part of my boost right now, as I'm working towards connecting with the communities that I would be representing, is to truly get out with me with the people, community events. Whether or not invited or not, sometimes it's just a wonderful thing, just to make an appearance, just to speak. And so, that is my vision, that's how I approach my scheduling of time. I do work full time, but I'm able to work late at night to compensate for the time I spend in the day.
I think it's really difficult for me to actually quantify how much time I spend in schools, because I go whenever they ask me to come. And I go when they don't ask me to come to. So I try to get into my schools as much as I can. And I mean, several times a year to those schools, and not just for congratulations, you know, employment, school district, twenty-five years, kind of things. I try to actually get in and walk around, visit all the classrooms. I regularly, I see me here, or I was at my school, but I'm actually there for my birthday, and I'll be at all the things with most of the members, putting it down. I spent an entire day on the Carmarthen with their older dogs, and visiting, talking to all the school students and their parents at their old house. I was just recently driving to Street School. I didn't know if I was on a very consistent basis.
I have a permanent, all time, permanent part-time employee with a material, that's all that's left to use. I have some autonomy and flexibility in terms of learning, I can get away from the office or move things around to be able to get other.
or move things around to be able to get other events and apartments that way. And I am able to live by a balance between being able to be where you need to be and be able to prioritize. In the school, trustee position is something that I take incredibly seriously. And that I will prioritize that with the highest standard of effort when I need to be there for the rest of the year.
Thank you. To my profession, I can say with a prescient care of and casual calls that definitely gives me flexibility as well. I think really getting out there and going to our pack meetings, our team pack meetings. I'm already out there and talking to parents. I'm already visiting schools. I'm already attending school board meetings. I think we just really need to get out there, open a dialogue, talk to parents, talk to the teachers, talk to the children. Thank you.
I'm also here at a good morning shift, so I'm sure my office is open. I'm also out of it in my life where I don't work full time anymore. I work thirty hours a week, so there's spare time. And that's why I'm also doing these things. On this part of my life. What I actually like to do here is not actually going to talk to people. What I like to do is actually, instead of getting in schools and having people talk to me. I like to see teachers and students and parents come in and just drop by on a regular schedule, maybe once every two weeks or once a week or something. For a couple of hours, everybody can drop by. We can tell them what's happening, what the problems are in the school, what is actually going on there. And I'm interested to actually take notes of that and bring that to the role of education because I'm convinced that what happens in school every day of your life is what should be getting the policies off the board of education.
Nice to know me, that's a question. Have I got time? I'm retired. Have I been out to the schools? Yes, as like trustee before me. I can't really come up with a definite answer. Some weeks I'm there, out of the schools, three, four times. Other weeks I don't go at all. I was recently in Terry Fox Run. I was asked to emcee at the West Side's Centennial Park Crosswalk. I don't know whether it didn't happen. I'm into Christmas concerts, I'm into a sentence, I'm into packing. So I've sat down in staff rooms and actually enjoyed a kick with staff and conversations. So I'm out there as much as I can. Do I do this enough? Probably not. It'd be something that I don't get in my next term, definitely. But it's very important to get out and see the kids and talk to the teachers.
Thanks for the question. Short answer is in the meantime. The second, longer answer is within my collective agreement with my employer, there is a clause for negotiating time off in regards to this type of position. I would also take vacation by my work overtime. And I have already taken off days to work on this campaign with my employer. So I am committed to doing those things. I believe this is very important, so it's worth that time in mind. I'm obviously an energetic person. I enjoy meeting people and I enjoy listening. So that's something I'd really like to bring to the table.
I can't quantify in the last year or so, I said, in my schools and in schools around this district, I take road trips. And I go into rural areas, second weekend in September. I spend the day driving all the way up to Hoover and packing and visiting all the schools in the Grand Thompson. Even though that's not my area, I can't risk that. But as chair, I thought that is my responsibility to be out and not just when we have our meetings, go to those rural areas. Another thing I need to tell you that I often go into the classroom, I often go into maintenance facility. You're going to find me in the group, you're also going to find me at the board office because those are all critical parts and pieces that make an education system work. So I spend a significant amount of time talking to all of these people that make this system work and that we need to hear from because we are incredibly diversified. But I think if you took my time, on average, in my life, a building, talking directly to kids or people that we employ, probably my school concession, minimum four hours a week.
Thanks, Lily, for the question. So I can't quantify because I've been shadowing as I work towards my entry to education program. So I've done one hundred and fifty hours in various schools over the past four months, more as a faculty observer. But I definitely didn't know since I decided to run for school trustee. Over the past four months, I've visited Defford Elementary, South Hallie, and the schoolyards. I've spoken at the last two grads, early grades of grads for Paulineville, Preacher Burden School, South County Secondary, the alley secondary, to the intergroup center. I played year rap for Parker Patton. They did hockey. And over the last years, I've spoken at West Side Secondary, Rangestown, For Rich, about municipal politics. And if I'm allowed to like, I could continue to visit schools. And if I'm after those one hundred and fifty five voices.
Thanks very much for the question. And I can conclude you that it's important that trustees get out of schools as not something that is in our field. In my role as TRU, like you go to high schools, it's in high school law classes. I already talked a lot about improvements that they add. Be in the law school, the business schools, the business law schools. Take, take, interior schools of business as well. I have a little presentation I gave about human rights in the workplace. If you understand what the workplace rights are. A lot of these kids are applying part-time, so they should understand human rights. So we talk a little bit about what your employer can ask you to do, what your safety rights are. And so I've done that presentation this fall at that alley with South Camp. And I'll get that up to West Side. And I'm hoping to expand that out in some of the other area schools as well. Because it's part of what I do at the university is to get a lot of reach. Obviously, something that will continue with the school trustee.
So again, of course, I agree that it's very important that we go out and we reach out to schools and teachers and faculty. Before you began this process of campaigning, I sat down with my wife, even though my kids like to be there at eight o'clock. And I said to my wife, "If I witness, there's going to be days when I come late and nights when I'm not late, and this is going to be the way it is." So are you okay with that? And they said, "Yeah," because they agree that this is a very important role. And we as a family came to the conclusion that this is something that's valued. So also change careers allows me more flexibility. Last ten years in the Sun Peaks, I think I carried a management role in camera stuff. And what that's done to me is allows you to, my days leave at twelve o'clock in the afternoon for the day. That's okay. I make my own schedule. So I base my career around this position.
Thank you. We have probably time for one more question and answer, and then we're going to get into the closing comments.
Hello. As a woman in trade who happily stumbled upon my career through school counselor, what would you like to see done to promote equality and diversity in male dominated interests such as STEM, trades, and shop electives?
So in my own current set peaks, I'm Jeff Law, the ITA on the one operation side. And something that I'd like to see is have more of all in the schools and have a presence. I think it would still like to have this exception that trades are handled better. But I really can see more of a presence in the schools and more creation to some of the females, male employees are and what's out there. And we see a lot up the hill. We have a lot, we have two females in particular who went through the North Program. And they've gone on and have been very, very successful. And they, in my mind, are an example of what you can do as female in trades. So I think it's very important to have our expectation in schools.
I guess if you're interested in trade, science, technology, engineering, math, STEM. And what's interesting though is that a lot of the soft skills that they grow up in, organizations like Google are starting to realize that the most valuable points are those who have those soft skills. My professional law, we know that in the industry, it's actually the majority is women as opposed to men in the field of law, which I think is a wonderful thing that we sort of achieve that gender balance in terms of the intake of the law school, not professional generally as a whole, but certainly moving in that direction. Our C R, he was justice to our Supreme Court, so whether there's drama around that, that's a wonderful thing for us to have. But yes, of course, girls can be just as good as science, technology, and even math in itself. We need to encourage a form of gender balance across the board. And then, you know, what's to be carried, what's to go into the covers? And that's just, that's good as well.
The last day that I was shadowing at County School Arts, the class champion of a multi-week series tournament of race to one thousand was a female student. And she was very proud, and so were her, you know, classmates. But I think, you know, there's things like the TRU trades program that are creating opportunities for women when they come out of high school. And it's also creating role models such as yourself for younger women that think you're a trade. But I think it also comes about ways where we have to make sure that boys are feeling comfortable to, you know, being single or being answered. The County School Arts, it's been an amazing opportunity to see what happens when all children are rightfully expressed themselves regardless of gender.
Thank you. We are starting with the school system right now with new positions for the new career education curriculum that's coming up. And from what I've seen and I've talked to several of our coordinators who are at our schools, it's a huge part exploring every single option or vareness of gender. It's really become about what is your passion, what is your interest? And I think that's the best way to go for all of our kids. It's really about them having whatever their passion about. Now, it does come to trades and STEMs. I'm the mom of a mechanical engineer, and she's a twenty-two-year-old female. I believe really, really strongly in that for women. That's what she wanted, and this school district helped her get there.
Thanks for the question. I think a way to promote these types of qualities within the system is to encourage women girls to participate in programs related to experience the operational tools. I believe it's called the HENNY pedal, if I'm saying that wrong. But whether they're, HENNY or boxy, it was something boxy. But having that box actually gets these students elevated to machinery so they are actually able to operate them. But I think if they enjoy to learn to try those tools, then they are an operator of heart. And that's a great move for them as well.
Well, School District Seventy Three has got set in the way with our Mercap trades technology. And from everything that I know, it's open to both male and female. There is no case where we're leaning towards a male student rather than a female student. It's basically their choice if they want to go into trades or not. And so I believe we're on the right path. We're having a great progression.
I think we have schools, trade schools, trade programs as a great start. But we also have to see that the actual start is probably down in kindergarten level. We were talking about, we had the kids very young. And there is the people that their sources there, that gender doesn't really matter that much. It matters what you want to do, what you're good at, what you enjoy. And I think kindergarten and operating on that's where the start. So it's very good, entirely new generations, entirely new attitudes through resources.
Thank you. As Joe said, we do have the Mercap trades program. They just built an extension at TRUs. They're expanding their trades programs. I think it's important to have role models like yourself. One of the things I noticed, they have the camps master program. And they have all our different schools. And one of the things they have in there is auto cadence. So I think it's really important that we have positive female role models and not utilize program, the camps master program and other programs that are in camp to encourage women to be trained.
Hi, I'm just, I'm sort of the one who said that we really are moving against right now here. And when I talked about here, the importance of that idea of organizing diversity and all of those things, I think that's a big part of tapping into who the student is from a mission or a path to that door in terms of the given really limitless experience in terms of what their exposure to different elements of the world and what was offered. Maybe in terms of encouraging trades that we need to, I mean, it's so much built into our society. And so when people are coming, as we often do, like with first year of summer, for example, that it seems less now, like when you go into the rest and buy anything from building blocks, you're either building a princess castle, you're building, you know, bought the builders' ad, or you're actually building something that boys would want to go with. It's very interesting. But I think those gender types are starting to dissipate a bit. I think that you spoke one word that I thought was really important, and that was counselor. You said that there was one you took out of the interest and you got to know enough to know what you wanted to do. That's where I think teachers and support staff need our support as trustees to continue to have the ability to do their job well. And with Asha, I give it to it. Thank you.
I love your question. And I think a couple of things. One, our school district was recognized as pastor by the ITA as having one of the highest participation rates in our school in the province. So that's one for us. Second thing is, the district principal who's in charge of our grades and transitions, we just changed her title, but she is in charge of that. So I think it helps by having a female at the top of that whole program. She's a role model herself. And the third thing is, when I look at grade seven, eight students, they're no longer doing foods or clothing for their girls. And now work, and they work for the boys. They get a mosaic and they do them all. And I think that's a really, really important step is that everybody gets exposed to these things and it's not gendered anymore.
Thank you for the question. I believe as a parent, that as a teacher starts at home, it's that we wouldn't progress through daycare centers or food, mobile care centers or what have you, private tech or kindergarten. But it's people like yourself, and I know I believe as trustee you will be welcomed to the seventies and to the other communities. I would highly welcome you to speak to the children. I believe that there's many things that I can teach my children, that there's many things that I cannot, and I cannot attempt to. And I leave that to the schools through their curriculum. But I also leave it to the administrators, the teachers, the trustees who make those decisions. On behalf of the parents, cannot be there to make those decisions, to bring individuals like yourselves to talk to the children, to connect with them in those ways, to speak about your experience. And I truly believe that when children hear all the experiences firsthand and they see them firsthand, it really resonates with them. So I love that. Thank you.
All right, that's the question. We're going to have the closing comments. There, so I mentioned, first of all, that if somebody you know from the making site, there'll be another forum on Tuesday, October sixteenth at seven at the End of Education Center, trustee forum. I think it's, or never, Deepak, actually. So if you want to go there. That was the last one, and then five days later, four years later, the election on the twentieth. It's been said, that's the last time I think I've heard your meeting. The last attorney general and finance minister went directly from school trustee into Victoria. That was Mike Mijon, who also helped Phil Solzner credit and raised the bargain. So it's, these people become very, very important people in a blink of an eye. So it's a very important job to do. So we'll start with closing comments from the act. Can you start it here? I think even though you're all in for the good of the kids, you aren't competing against each other. There's ten going for five seats, and there's two going for one chase. So why do you tell them five things you go for?
Thank you. It's a little bit difficult because playing field here doesn't feel even above my readiness here, but I will speak to the rest of my ability. I met my ready-made Daniels, the attendant raise greeter at the Alabama Board Chase. And what I realized is that I've made things to learn from my readiness. I've made other things to learn from the people, the parents, the counselors, all the folks that I've been engaging with through this process, the election process, perhaps, you know, onwards. And so truly, my mission is a collaborative one, to work in partnership with the administrators, the trustees, you know, from a longer, higher level, the Ministry of Education. But truly, it's really about promoting the unique traits of each community, each school. Area four, that would be under my representation, should I be elected, is a basketball. It's not a basketball competition, but it is a basketball in space and size. And so truly, what my mission is, is to connect all the folks that I'm able to through this process to show that I am not here to represent only my community. I come as a voice for all communities within the area. That is my passion, that's my mission. I do have children who remain in the school system for many years ahead. I do have children who remain in the school system for many years ahead, crafted out a plan, or kind of strategized the time here, I have a wonderful supporting commitment. And so I really do believe that, you know, if you build on the strengths that each community has, if we lean on our communities in those ways, but also keeping in mind that that Aboriginal education force, the First Nations force within our community is a very important one, one that I truly also see being strengthened throughout this process as well. I have been reaching out to many of the bands under my representation, potential representation, and so again, with that collaborative spirit, that is my approach for this process.
Couple of things that I bring to the table are, what my experience, having been a school trustee for 10 years, it's pretty big learning experience, and knowing that we are going to have at least three new people on the board, I think it's very valuable to have some more experienced trustees on the board, as well as having those new voices. Because sometimes those ideas that people have, that would love to implement, well, we have tried, and maybe they can go as well as we'd like them to. The other thing that I bring in my provincial experience, I sit as the boards representative to the V C S T, the provincial council. I'm very intimately involved in a lot of blocking efforts that the V C S T does. I currently am sitting on the Capitol working with the V C S T, talking about the provincial Y B, the Capitol Callers for New Schools and Repairs, Province White, and I think that's an important part of my career. And the fact that my kids are going to be in this system for another long time, my youngest is only 33, I have a lot invested to make sure that this district is successful, and that kids have a chance. And being in Brock, and being on North Shore, I talk to a lot of families, and a lot of the vulnerable families and families, and know what those concerns are. And those are the students that we focus on, trying to get our graduate higher, are those kids that are the most vulnerable, and those are the ones that I have on tactical level with the faces.
Thank you. I think one of the statements I brought to you is that I bring, I'm bringing enthusiasm, but I also bring a lot of untapped, untapped knowledge that I bring to the table. I have had an opportunity, obviously, to be a member of the school board to date, I think it was announced in large, and trusted with that responsibility. I see our kids as really our resource, but we send, when they hit the school age years, we send them to school, and oftentimes, we don't see that as much in the day as the people who work at schools do. The people who work at schools, teachers, support staff, the environment there, can often identify that our children are starting to struggle long before we do at home, or maybe the ways that they know those changes in social behavior, they know those changes in hygiene, changes in homework, those kinds of things. Where we, I think, can support, and what I want to break to you, is that we support that relationship between parent, teacher, student, and like making sure that integrating all of it, and really have to be a tri-coop trust, so that we're in a position to be able to help students when they're young, improve mental health outcomes, improve graduation outcomes, and therefore improving our society as a whole. Teachers can do it without our support, I think that's important part of it. And again, I definitely, what I've got to keep experience, you will always get honest, transparent answers from me, and I would be very honored to move forward as a trustee in this whole domain.
Thank you. Team building, earning trust, accountability, transparency, ability to mediate, and importantly, listening. Make well-formed decisions, create equal opportunities, whether it's fundraising for the path, coordinating school volunteer jobs, volunteering in classrooms, or standing on the front lines with teachers. Education is always the driving force in our family, and will continue for years to come. Building connections and getting our educational stakeholders on board is key. We need to collaborate with our city council, with our school board, with our M L As, with our community leaders, with our community council, local business leaders. We need to involve their parent groups, and the community as a whole. We are just one of 60 school districts in B C, and we need to be the voice of school district, thank you.
Since I've been out here campaigning, I've talked to a lot of people, I don't have much of a budget, so I do a lot of work myself. And the one thing I have here, I've never heard a teacher, or a student, or anybody in the public, or a parent, say that the school board is actually really doing a good job. Not once. Only appeared that once, occasionally, and thus was on board of allocation meetings. So I think it's a high time for some refreshment, there has to be, people have to be in there, if that's what you need. There has to be a new spirit in the board of allocation, those meetings are might not be ongoing. There's very little discussion going on, so, you know, it is too important to be that way, you have, there has to be more excitement, there has to be a spirit in there, and I can bring that to you. I've, my principles are for the occasions of the spare, and accessible, and the highest qualities, and I will always stick to that. I will never break from that on my watch.
Thank you. What a one for me. Well, first off, I bring an educational background for 35 years in the profession, in the education profession. I've been in the schools, I've been on the front line, I know what is going on. And so when we discuss topics, I have that insight as to how it would affect the schools with the decisions that are being made. I have the time, I retired, I have the time to commit myself to the jobs or the tasks absolutely as a trustee. And finally, in my first term as trustee, I have proven to numerous times that I will voice what the people want. I will, when it comes to decisions being made, I will voice what they have told me they are looking for in the decision. So for those three reasons, I believe you should vote for me. My background, my time commitment, and the fact that I want to be your voice of the world.
Thank you, Mr. Small. That's the way it feels, right? Because he was right, he wasn't my strength, going to park us on the entry, I remember that when I was there. Why, you should vote for me, though. Thirty-three years in this community, I've done a lot of actions, I've built a lot of friends, I want people that understand that I'm hardworking, energetic, and outgoing individual. I bring all those things to the table. I want to listen to the community, I want to work, I want to have diplomatic communications with the community, and I want to come up with creative new ideas when we move forward in this next round of bargaining with all our students' educations in the future. I want to work with provincial governments, hats, parents, students, administrations, and support staff, so we can do those three things, listen, come up with meaningful, dramatic conversations, and creative ideas. If I was doing this for thank you cards and segments, I wouldn't be here today. Kids are our future, they are very important, like I said earlier in the beginning, I believe they're more important than all of us to our future, and I think everybody should vote for them. I'm here running for them, and I hope you all do. I hope you all have a great day on October 20.
I believe in kids, I believe in creating the best future I can. Yes, I have come to 10 years' experience, and I'm going to tell you, I work hard. I work hard every day for the trust that I've been given, that this community can be entrusted. I believe in community, and I believe in community service. I can tell you that just in the past week, last week, I was on the phone, I was the main number up, doing the work at the board at 8 o'clock at night until 10:30 at night, while I'm moving my daughter. I was doing the work at the board, but I was talking to the V C S T president on Thursday evening, I was doing the work at the board, early Friday morning, when I was on the phone conversation with the senior administrator of education. You can talk to a lot of my colleagues, you can talk to the district staff. I work hard every single day with the trust that I have been given, and I'm looking for you to trust me again, to continue to work hard. I know, and I understand the role of the trustees that govern this, and I bring to this role, and I bring to this work being balanced inclusive of all stakeholders in education. That's my approach in a very, very complex system. I believe in community service, I believe in our kids and their future. I believe in government as well, the trustee, and I work hard every single day to earn the trust that I have been given, when I was elected to trustee 12 years ago, and I am asking you again to trust how hard I will work in another 14 years.
So personally, my grandfather's in the group, as I said, he's served as school trustee for 28 years, I am hoping to follow in his visionary process. Both of my parents were school teachers, they met as school teachers, I'm training to be a school teacher myself. And being shadowing in the school that I've been coming in has got me so excited and so optimistic for the future, and for seeing the vibrancy of students. I have seven years of elective experience, and on October 20th, I will give you one or five attributes. I like his word, "adjectives," because that's the role of a trustee. Education is the best investment we can make, but it's a very hard sell with our provincial government, when we're up against things like public education, or against like healthcare when it comes to public education. All the things we've been talking about are contingent on resourcing from the provincial governments. The B C locals brought the burden so low that the new government can easily get away with saying we're investing, even with minimal increases. We need to make sure that the resources that are flowing to school boards across the province are adequate. There's a lot of work to catch up to do. When it comes to mental health in schools, we're living in a great new world, our young people are going to deal with some of the tensions and stresses that we never had to endure 10 or 15, 20 years ago. So we need to make sure that there's resources to deal with those sorts of things. To conclude, I want to thank our moderators for making the time to be here tonight. Thank everyone that had all the thoughtful questions, and all the candidates who are putting their names out there. I'm certainly jeopardizing my current elected position by running for both roles, but I think the connection between the school district and the city hall is critical, but I was willing to take that risk. And of course, I want to thank everyone that's attended tonight here, obviously, the people that are engaged in the process. And I would just encourage you to, you know, spread away from here tonight, try to talk to at least 10 people in the next 10 days, go over here.
I need to stand up to the chair's card. Thank you so much for coming, thank you for the moderator, thank you for organizing the forum tonight, I think we should start with that. When you grow up in the heart of North Shore, like my wife and I both did, I realized any success I've had in life is because in large part to the strong publicly funded education system, staff, the dedicated teachers, that's what propelled me to where I was able to pursue post-secondary education in my business and my laundry. I've taken that skill, and I've applied it to public service for quite literally decades. I was a school trustee for eight years, I was on the TRU Foundation for nine, which brings literally millions of dollars for deserving students. Education informs a passion in me, because I understand that's what helps everyone in this society, that's how we get ahead in society, when kids have opportunity, it's incumbent upon all of us, it's so loudly important for a modern, fair society, to give kids those kinds of options. If you don't give them those options, we go into a downward spiral. I see that back in South, in the provincial districts, that's the big goal, the board districts, that's the core. We have equality in this city. I would, if you go to P D C News dot com and look up, "How Canada became an education superpower," that informs, you should be glad to be in this state. That's what keeps this economy going, that's what makes this place go forward, that's what makes us, gives us our core values as Canadians. So this is something I have a deep passion for, something I'm going to dedicate myself to, which is why I'm here.
Thank you, Gavin, for coming out tonight, this is a very good experience. You know, I'm gonna make this quick. For me, I've been in the area, I come from Clearwater, I work with Sun Peaks, and I'm another town. I've been in this area for 36 years, and I'm not just here for this district, I've got two young children, the second one's in the system, like I mentioned before. And, you know, I'm here saying I'm invested, this is my second term, I feel like I've worked a lot in the last four years, a lot of my sources are great, and, you know, I understand the importance of education, and I'll just leave it at that, I guess. But, you know, the biggest thing I wanted to make sure, last one, is that you may not agree with all of our opinions, obviously, maybe we're not, that works, but when you go out to the league here, make sure you just pass on this, get people involved, get them educated. Again, I think that's the biggest challenge when you have a trustee, is letting people know, and not necessarily that it's right or wrong, just know what it is to be a trustee, and how it impacts, and seeing how the impacts are facing. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, candidates, for coming, and thank you for coming, yes, Tuesday, October 16th, Southern Gas, Handicure Center, if you can ask more questions, and so get pulled on the 20th of October. Thanks.